Call the Board of Trustees, regular meeting Monday, October 6, 2014, at 4 o'clock. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Adoption of agenda.
We received notification from Denny to remove new business B and C. So I'd like to remove those two.
A and C? B and C. Any other additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended agenda deleting 20B and C.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Public count. Please state your name, clerk.
My name is Roberta Schmidt. I live at 29 Olmwood, and recently a company owned by Steven and Angela Mizwander, environmentalists, purchased the property with the intention of turning it into a wetland mitigation bank. This is directly across the street from my house, and I need help. They're trying to flood 47 acres directly across the street from my house. They're trying to tell me that it's going to increase my property value, and the property value of those around it because no one will be allowed to build on this area ever again. It was my understanding that property values increase as people move into the area that brings up your value, so I don't understand how flooding would increase my property value. There's other concerns that I have. There's compost dumps that have gone in, you know, under the guise of other projects. That was a concern I had with this. Also, my son is autistic, and if you flood the area, autistic children have died in standing water because they are drawn to water. They also wander away, and they are drawn to water, and this is a safety concern for my family, having the standing water across the street from my house. I contacted them. They wanted to know any concerns that I had about this, and it took them two months to get back with me, and numerous phone calls, and finally I spoke with him today, and that's where I got some of this information directly from Mr. Mizwander that this was going to increase our property value, which I doubt it's going to. And also that historically that my area was a wetland back as far as 1930. I think this whole area was a wetland at one point in time, so I don't know how he can justify that, but like I said, I need help researching this and finding out if this is really going to be detrimental to my property value. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, and my road floods as it is already horribly, 29 mile road between Olmwood North Avenue. It floods all the way up to my house just sometimes from that cross creek that's there. And all the road commission does is blame the drain commission, and they come put a big sign out that says there's water over the road. It's like, no kidding, you know? My mailbox is floated away, you can't see the end of my driveway, and then they're going to flood across the street. You know, how is this going to be helping me? You know, mosquitoes. My house was robbed once about 10 years ago. I don't know what they plan on developing across the street, if it's going to be some kind of park with muggers to, you know, sit in the dark and wait for you, you know, things of that nature. And I guess the people who live around me will be receiving a public notice in the next 20 days because the DEQ has been notified of this, and they will be putting out public notices. And Lenox Township will be getting a copy of this also, where you have 45 days to respond. And I, as a homeowner, have 20 days to respond. I was told by the DEQ that they will not answer our question directly, but it will be used to determine whether they will issue a permit to these people or not. I want to protect my interest. I've lived there almost 20 years. I've invested a lot of time, money, and blood, sweat, and tears into my property, and I don't want it to see it go because somebody else was allowed to destroy a wetland, and in return, they can just go out in the middle of nowhere and ruin someone's life by flooding it and making it Moskeedoville for the people who live out there who don't have enough money to defend themselves against whoever it is that they're able to purchase these wetland mitigation credits. I don't know what else I have to say except that anybody in the area, keep an eye on this because they could be coming your way too if you have property for sale that's cheap around your houses. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public count? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Christine Bell. I'm candidate for State Senate in this district. I have lived in Chesterfield Township since 1971. I have been on the Board of Trustees in Chesterfield since 2008. I have a licensed attorney and a former teacher, and people ask me why I decided to run, and the answer to that is threefold. First, I know that I'm qualified. Secondly, what got my attention in the first place is that my opponent was running unopposed. And I started investigating, and I discovered that he has what, in my opinion, is a miserable voting record in the Senate. He's pretty consistently voted against things that I wanted him to vote for and vice versa. But another thing I wanted to say is, yesterday I went to your fire department open house, and I had a wonderful time, and I'm so glad you did that. And I wanted to say a big thank you to firefighter Dean Collins. I talked to him. He was very patient and very informative. We talked about the technical rescue unit, and you could tell by the look on his face and his body language that he's really proud of your fire department, and I don't blame him, rightfully so. And I also talked to another firefighter whose name I'm afraid I'm going to mispronounce, but I'm going to try. It's Meyer See.
Ron Meyersee.
Meyer See? Okay. Yeah, I spoke to him too, and he was also very good, and we talked about the plan that you have when you are not near hydrant, about the dump tank. And he showed me how the lighting apparatus works on some of the trucks so that when you do rescues at night, the area is lit so that they can see what they're doing. And I just wanted to say that I thank both of them for taking the time to talk with me. They were very good, and thank you to everyone who organized that open house. It was really well run, and I had a wonderful time. Whoever you are, thank you. And it's nice to meet all of you, and I hope to get better acquainted with you. I would have come here sooner, but unfortunately, it seems like Monday night is the day of choice for all the township board meetings, and with me being a trustee, I'm required to be at the meeting in Chesterfield. Otherwise, I would have come sooner. It's just fortunate that in this case, I guess you have it at 4 o'clock. Normally later, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll see. Maybe I can come back again and get better acquainted, but thanks for letting me talk. Have a good day.
Thank you. Any other public count?
Okay, just a, Mickey Ludeman, just a very short thing. I also went to the fire department. Saw you there, Christine. Oh, yeah. Once again, just publicly want to thank Debbie, all the firemen. They worked very hard. Food for everybody, chips. It's too bad. It was so windy. I did see some board members there. I probably missed some of the board members, but once again, I hope people in this township realize really what we have here in this department. Very loyal, hardworking, great guys, and I've personally used them at my homes before for medical things, and they're awesome. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Any other public count at this time? No other public count. Approval of minutes 9 to 2014.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of 9 to 2014.
Or motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Sheriff's report.
Everyone should have actually May through August.
Any questions regarding sheriff's report? Our department report.
We receive by office.
Thank you, sir. Actually, Debbie, if I can. Firefighter Collins, did the vehicle fire investigation, I'm just curious, did that certify him?
No, it did not. It was a, an awareness program. In fact, we were, we were there primarily to provide water supply. It was held at Ludeman 726 by the tracks, and they don't have any water supply there, and they burnt 11 vehicles, so they actually needed a tanker from us, so then they allowed Dean to participate in the class, and, but no certification.
I was just curious. Okay.
I just wanted to say, sorry, I couldn't make it to the opening yesterday. I did have to work, so I'm sure it was wonderful.
Probably the first one you missed in 25.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
EMS report. Mr. White? Not here?
He also emailed his report roughly about a couple hours ago.
Thank you. DPW report.
Received and filed, please.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for DPW superintendent? Code enforcement report.
Inspection forms for September have been received.
Thank you. Assessing department report. Engineers report. Mr. Safe.
Any questions to simplify on this?
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Safe? I'll read this real quick. Physbloom reading summer reading 2014 program was a major success. Children from grades three to 12 read a total of 33,981 pages. Toddlers and preschoolers read a total of 818 books. Our summer reading adult program had 21 participants and read a total of 150 books. Our haunted library is scheduled for Saturday, October 25, 2014, from 6 to 9. Prepare to be frightened. A children's Halloween party will be on Friday, October 31st, from 1 to 3. With the holiday season approaching, security is an important issue for all of us. Join an office from the Macomb County Police for personal defense class on Tuesday, October 14th. I believe, at 6:00 PM, I believe Sheriff Wickersham is instructing that. Our monthly sign language for beginners program will be held on Thursday, October 9th, at 5:30. Storytime with Beth Bagley Stanton is scheduled for Saturday, October 11th, at 10:30. An adult craft will be offered Tuesday, October 21st, from 5:30 to 7:30. Thank you. Any questions regarding library report? Senior center report. Supervisor's report. I'd like to let the board know that we are currently actively meeting with Attorney Joppick for all code enforcement violations. I believe we have roughly around 24 active, I believe, Attorney Joppick right now that we're dealing with, that we're trying to get through the process of notifying people of violations and some court cases right now that we're currently active, but we are pursuing them, and we are meeting regularly. Myself, the code enforcement officer, Mr. Murray, and Attorney Joppick to make sure that we, nothing falls through the cracks and that we miss anything. Also at this time too, Mr. White, I know you're here from Millstone Pond. I don't know if you would like to introduce yourself to the rest of the board. I know you made a special trip out just to visit.
Do you want me to say?
Yeah, might as well have you right now so that way everybody knows you. You could too. Debbie, I know that we brought up the sirena issue too. If you'd like to meet with Mr. White, if he's here today, just to do a follow-up with that.
Yes, we already met on that.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's.
Hi, my name is Ken Webb, and I'm the new community manager at Millstone Pond. For those of you that don't know where it is, it's at 26th County Line, and I met with Ron, I met with Dennis. We're in the process of ordering homes. We're going to start infilling the community. We have about 40 sites that in the first phase, and next year, we're going to start developing the second phase of 125 sites. Tomorrow, I'm going to order three new homes, and we have people that have already ordered homes that are going to be coming in pretty soon, so we're going to get pretty busy out there. So, and I appreciate you having me here, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. So I have my report. Any questions? Treasurer's report.
Before we get started with my report, I wanted to backtrack to the EMS. Sergeant White had the fire wall yesterday for the open house, and they do have more vaccine for the flu shots. They ran out on the day that they were supposed to have them, and he did say that they do have more so that if you need to get up there, they do have the shots there now. And yes, it was too bad. It was such a beautiful day for everybody yesterday, you know? It was so windy, and the guys put in a lot of extra work and effort in fixing food and that, but we did, we had a couple hot dogs and coffee and enjoyed the day, and they always do put on a nice, very nice thing. So, anybody got any questions on the treasurer's report?
Make a motion that we accept treasurer's report.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes.
The amount for approval is $271,767.70. There were numerous bills that came in after the close of business on Thursday, and so I added those in. Citywide door, the sheriff's. Phone bill and some fuel bills. Is that anything something different between what you got and mine?
Make a motion to approve the orders and bills in amount of $271,767.70.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Other questions or discussion? Deputy clerk broke up, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Hattonbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees' report. Trustee Churchy, please.
I don't have anything other than the ordinance we're going over later. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd. Nothing to report. Thank you. Clerk's report.
It's that time of year again. We're all getting ready for the November election, so that keeps us up pretty busy. Hopefully this will go smoothly.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and file all reports.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Thank you. Unfinished business. Dump weighter maintenance agreement update.
Yes, last month, I submitted a proposal for the maintenance of the dump weighter in this building. At that time, we tabled it until I was able to collect some additional information. Since the last meeting, I was able to talk directly with inspector for this area and discuss a few different options. One of the options that was discussed that I outlined in the letter that I submitted was making the dump weighter dormant. What that would entail would be basically disconnecting an electrical and closing off the access doors, the one upstairs and the one downstairs, to make it inaccessible. And they would, he would tag it dormant, which would get us out of loophole of the maintenance during the time period.
Is that your recommendation?
That would be the, short of doing the maintenance and keeping it operational, yes, it would be very inexpensive to make it dormant, and it would leave it in place if we decide to reutilize it in the future.
Thank you. Any questions?
My only concern is one of the agenda items later about doing things at the old building, cleaning that out. Some of that stuff is going to have to go downstairs, and so I'd almost like to wait.
We talked with the inspector on a timeline for this. He really didn't have a problem if it was something that we were looking to do in the near future. Would I be buying sometime in the next year?
Say again, we could bypass until next year.
We, if this is something we're looking to do to make it so he can tag it dormant, he would, he would have no problem kind of waiting a year for us to accomplish that to get it to a dormant stage.
Okay. All right, so I'd still like to hold off, let's see, until the January timeframe, and then the other thing is to talk to everyone in the building and see. Now Cam says he doesn't use it, but does that mean that nobody is using it? So let's just ask the question of who, you know, who does and who doesn't. And if, if we approve cleaning the rest of that building up, it'll come in handy for some of the stuff that's over there that's going to need to go in the basement, so.
Now, a big, a big concern is it hasn't been inspected or maintained in years, and if we're going to start DPW guys using it potentially on a daily basis, if something were to happen or they got hurt using it, a lot of liability. So I'm wondering if we could have someone come in, just take a look at it, accompany, inspect it, do a maintenance on it, because if we could even do a one-year contract that was fairly cheap, just so we're covered. I mean, I would think it would be a big liability thing, potentially. There hasn't been no maintenance or inspections on it in years.
I hate to see them spend any money on that if we're going to make it dormant. I, I mean, if that building's going to be cleaned out, I think basically Cam's guys will be moving the stuff. They have to use the stairs.
But there's no reason for them to grunt the stuff down there and have a possibility of hurting themselves with that sitting right there.
Well, they shouldn't do anything that's going to hurt themselves. That's, that's enough said right there.
What could possibly go wrong with it though, that they would get hurt? I mean, it's just, you know, it's not where they go into it. It's just they set a box in there and it goes down.
I've never seen it used. You're the first person I ever heard of using it. I've never seen it used. Have you ever used it?
I used it once out of a novelty, just because it was there to try it. Most things that I'm up and down, it either isn't time efficient for me to load it and go through all that. Sometimes if something doesn't close the gate downstairs, you can't operate it from the top side unless you go down and set the gate. I find a lot of times the things that I'm needing, that I would actually need it for, it's not big enough. You can't fit the item in it, so then you end up using a hand truck or whatnot to get it to the basement.
So I've been told that the IT people do use it to take the old stuff downstairs. So it's, it is being used. Now, is it being used daily? No. For heavier items.
I would be comfortable waiting, you know, a couple months, and so you can talk, you know, to everybody and make sure it isn't being used, and everybody's comfortable with it being shut down.
Yeah, and I myself, I can tell you, I haven't used it, you know, since we first got in this building, but I did use it at that point. But I know what's over next door that needs to come downstairs, and some of it's, you know, heavy, and so it's sitting there. Utilize it. So, with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the January meeting, and then we readdress whether or not to shut it down or not.
Are we going to allow DPW to use it without it being safely inspected? Are we going to allow the DPW guys to use it or the move?
I don't see why putting boxes or things from over there is going to do any damage. They're not going to climb in it and set each other down, so.
Well, if the, if the safety circuit, I can tell you from working on them, if the safety circuit on the doors were to fail, it could run with the doors open. That's where your potential for injury comes in, and I've seen it happen. That's what's, that's what's worrying me, and it's just the potential for liability. Attorney Joppick?
Yeah, well, I think that there is definitely some concern. If it is required to be inspected on certain intervals, and it has not been inspected on those intervals, my recommendation would be for liability purposes or reasons to not use it or put it out of service. And if it's not going to be put out of service, then until it's inspected, it should not be used. So it's either put it out of service. I would agree with that. Or inspected and then use it, but don't use it without conducting the inspections that are, that have not been undertaken in accordance with the requirements.
So if we were going to wait, we could padlock the power, at least no one's using it at that time, until we decide if we're going to keep it or not. But as far as the DPW, the guys use it, I'd be very nervous about that.
Did he say anything? Would it be 630 if we just wanted to inspect it once?
If you look, if you have the quotes from last month.
Yeah, I got them in front of me.
If you look on page two of the four access, which was the company I recommended, they are also the company that installed the unit. At the very top, they have the non-contractual service charges. So basically, you'd be looking at time and materials per what their rates are.
So like an annual test of $250?
Plus the travel time and labor hours for the personnel.
We, I don't think we should spend any money on something we are 99% sure we're going to cover up.
Cam, you've seen the stuff over there, they stick them over. Your guys, do you think it's a problem then? I understand you're always concerned we're going to hurt ourselves, but do you see any problem with getting all that stuff downstairs without using a dump weighter?
It's just going to be a lot more lever intensive, that's all. If I was going to do it, I'd probably just use the hand truck up and down the stairs.
Carry two boxes instead of five.
So those that are using it, that we don't know have been using it from, if we shut it down and lock it up from this point on, you guys will be called every time somebody needs to. needs to be taken downstairs? I'm just saying, because we really don't know.
Anything, anything that weighs anything, we're pretty much doing it now anyways.
Well, Jody, why don't we table, like you said, padlock it just so no one's using it, and you find out if it's being used by anybody? And then we can make the decision, like you said, in January. What's your motion?
Well, if that's, if that's the case, then it only needs to be tabled until next month. Because it's not going to take until January. I was hoping that they can utilize it, so. Make a motion that we table this until the November meeting to find out how many people are actually using the dump weighter in the building.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions, discussion?
No. Can you padlock that out and look at the disconnect?
I haven't done anything to it.
I don't know if it's got, some of them got a hole for.
Well, it does, it does have the capabilities of padlocking and locking out to disconnect.
I'd like to see us do that.
And I can do that if that's the board's pleasure.
And you'll be the only one with the key.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2-93, Article 18, Special Land Use Ordinance Amendment. Trustee Church here.
Okay, did everybody get the copies from the planner to help explain things a little bit more? Did you have any questions on that one? It was pretty, I, reading his memo, it clearly seemed clear of everything.
Any questions?
That was just, the, the only thing with the special land use was giving permission to re, you know, reasons to rebuild it. So that's what was changed on that one.
Make a motion to approve the amended ordinance 2-93, Article 18, Special Land Use Ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2-93, Article 24, Definitions of Section 1839, Seasonal Business Ordinance Amendment.
Okay, as you saw from Dave's letter, again, he gave us, gave you all what we took out and what was new. It was to define seasonal businesses versus seasonal attractions.
And actually, in this one, correct me if I'm wrong, it's going to be seasonal outdoor sales and seasonal attractions?
Yes. Yeah, because it talks about fireworks and seasonal outdoor sales is right on, what would be like the third page, under D, number 12.
Yes, I have. And one of the questions that was raised by Mr. Burschler was the state's term references, which we didn't look into very well.
Yeah, that was the other thing that he was straightening out, because some of the references were incorrect and had changed, so he straightened them together.
Any questions? Make a motion to approve the ordinance 2-93, Article 24, Definitions and Sections 1839, Seasonal Business Ordinance Amendment.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance 2-93, Article 3, Section 339, Solar Energy Systems.
Okay, that one is the easiest one. On page nine, it's corrected. It was a typo. There are only three definitions, not five.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2-93, Article 3, Section 339, Solar Energy System Amendment.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. New business. 2012 International Fire Code Adoption. Chief.
I sent to everybody a copy of the updated ordinance request that I put together. Currently, we're in a 2009 cycle, and the state has adopted the 2012 cycle of code coded, of books and code enforcement for building and fire. So all we're doing is, is bringing our ordinance in line so I can begin to enforce the 2012 code. That's it in a nutshell. Forwarded everyone a copy as well. Steve, and I haven't heard any, any changes needed from Steve's end, so let Steve comment on it. Other than that, I think it should be just a simple adoption. It repeals the old ordinance.
Yes, Attorney Joppa. Yes, I have looked at it, and the only thing that I, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to call you, but I think it's just a typographical thing in the third line of Section 1 at the end, it says, well, it says references and appendices in the third line. References and appendices included with this text, it has published by the International Co-Council. I think the by is supposed to be be and is. I think it should be bee instead of by. Sorry, I'm a councilor of members, but I noticed this. Make it read correctly. It should be be and is hereby adopted. Yes, that's correct. The signature box and certification by the court will be added to the official ordinance.
Do you recommend this adoption, Attorney Joppa?
Yes.
Thank you. Just need a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the Fire Code Ordinance 2040, yeah, 2014, Part 49, Ordinance Number 2.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chief. Under D, pump repair for 26 Mile Road Pump Station. DPW.
Roughly three weeks ago, we had another failure in our 26 Mile Road Lift Station. At that time, I had the contractor take the pump back to their facility for a full evaluation. And in return, they have submitted an estimate to rebuild the existing pump. Along with the estimate for rebuilding, there's also an estimate for a replacement pump. As you can see, rebuilding it is a little over half the cost. Warranty is not quite as good, but it is less than half the cost, and they do tend to stand behind their work. This pump, we have not had a problem with yet. As you may remember, last year, we did purchase a replacement pump. That was for the other, there's two pumps in this well. So this one, I knew probably wasn't too far behind the other one when the other one failed. But this one is in better condition because of what the failure was, which is fluids getting into the electrical components. We caught it early enough that it is rebuilt.
Your recommendation?
To rebuild the pump by Kennedy Industries at a cost of $5,731, which comes with a one-year warranty.
How old is this one?
This pump should be seven years old, the one that's being rebuilt, and was put in service 70 years ago.
Cam, do you have any idea how many of these pumps we have in the township?
This is the only pump station we have.
And there's two in there?
Two in there. And then I try and keep a spare in the building. When we have a failure, we can, we can change it out and keep systems normal.
So right now, we're sitting without a spare or something?
Right now, we do not have a spare, but we still retain redone its system. This cost, something that they are doing a little bit different, that did increase the cost of the rebuild. You'll notice on the quote that it does come with a cord. The cord is, I believe, 112 feet long. It is an expensive cord. I believe it's 1,500 dollars for the cord alone. They will not stay behind a warranty unless they ship pumps with cords installed on them already. And because of the setup of the pump station, the cord needs to be that long.
What is the average life of one of them?
Honestly, I can't answer that because there's a lot of variables in there. You know, what your GPM is, so, you know, so how fast is the pump cycling, size, you know, what, what kind of fluids is pumping.
But would you usually expect 10 years out of it, or would you, would you expect 15?
Well, here's the way I look at it. They're, they're willing to warranty those pumps for five years. So I would imagine halves between five and 10 years.
Well, and see, with that, with that said, spending twice the amount or getting a brand-new one with a five-year, that's what I'm just trying to justify fixing it if it might be...
But this rebuild would be like a, like new product, correct? Yeah, it'll be, I mean, they go through complete, I have to end of their facility. The lengths that they go to, to, to check these pumps out and redo the status and everything, it's, it's quite amazing. And it's one of the reasons why it's so costly to do that.
But they're only going to give you a one-year warranty, so technically, we could spend half the amount in a year from now, be in the same hole again.
Right.
I'll go with your recommendation. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, we could have something simple as something cut to cord, and fluids weight down the cord into the pump. That's not a covered warranty. So we could spend twice the amount on a brand-new pump, six months after something cut that cord, be right back here talking about this again.
It's a little bit different than it's seizing up or anything.
Right, exactly.
Then the insurance would be paid for because it was...
Sure. I mean, some of you may remember, you know, a few months back, we had a failure that was by no fault of our own. It was something that the technician overlooked. They came out, they rectified the problem, took the pump back, completely tore it down, went through everything, shipped it back out the very next day, and turned it right around. And there was no charge to us because they knew it was something that they should have caused. So I know if, you know, even if we have an issue, if it's something that's going to be coverable, that's a material issue, that they'll stand behind their work.
So, so right now, we have a pump that was, and that was rebuilt one year ago? What's, what's in there running right now? How old are those pumps? How long have they been?
The pump that took the spot, this pump that we're, we're talking about currently, is the brand-new pump that we bought last fall. The other pump was a rebuilt pump that was in the station when we took control of it. Because the pump that that had to replace did not be rebuilt. It was too expensive.
My thought is, the warranty may mean nothing, because I'm assuming the warranty is from a daily buy-in, not from a daily installment. So that pump may sit in your garage for three years. It could sit there for five years. So a brand-new one, if I get warranty, might mean nothing.
Right. Just like the, the other pump that we changed out last year with the rebuild that was in the station, that was already expired before we put it in service.
Let me ask you this, how, if, if we want a brand-new one, how fast could you get it?
10 months.
Oh, okay. Kind of wipes that out. I just wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry, not 10 months, 10 weeks it takes to get a new pump.
And because the station would actually run on one pump?
Yeah, but if that pump fails.
Then you got nothing.
They got nothing. So it's not a very good feeling.
I'm just kind of getting towards the same thing, Jody's saying, are we better off buying a brand-new one and just weighing it out? But obviously not.
Yeah. Unfortunately, because of, these pumps are special, you know, but between horsepower, lift, impeller components, na, 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 they kind of build them to order. And this pump has to come from out of country, Sweden.
I do remember that.
Takes, takes quite a while to get it from there to here.
The warranty they're offering is, is complete warranty, I presume? Other than accidental?
Yeah. If there's going to be a, a defect in materials or workmanship, they will cover it. Obviously, if something gets ingested down, down through the system, that box is up, breaks the impeller, breaks the shaft, they have no control over that. We cannot hold them responsible. And other items? Yes. You'd be amazed at what ends up down there.
Is this the same, same?
I'll make a motion to approve the rebuilding of the existing pump for 3, 5, I'm sorry, $5,731, comes with a one-year warranty.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did you see Cam, some of us have some history there to read?
Great Lakes Water Authority update. Mr. Save.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Um, we put this item on the agenda and give the board a little update of what's going on with Detroit Water and Sewer Department, basically DWSD. As you guys were, there was a talk about turning over the regional system to, in authority, comprised by the three counties and DWS, DWS in Detroit. And they're still in the works of the legal issues and how that's going to get formed and how it's going to operate. So Cam and I have been attending these meetings. The first meeting we attended about a couple of weeks ago, they issued a letter of, a memo of understanding, which I, I think I've emailed the board a copy of that, basically states what's, what's the intention of DWSD, and what's, what would be the roles of, of the authority and the, and the members. Now, this morning, Cam and I attended a second meeting, help of Macomb County, and I'm just going to touch on the highlights. There were a series of meetings administered by the county as far as, on behalf of Macomb County, and the Board of Commissioners are looking at all these details before they commit to be in part of this authority. They received a lot of documents and feedbacks from several municipalities opposing to this authority. There's a lot of unknowns at this time, even the Board of Commissioners don't have an answer, or the authority, or DWSD. So a few things are still in question. DWSD, the memo of understanding, there was a section in there saying that the rates will be capped at 4% for the next 10 years. Basically, that's a 40% increase. And, and it turned out to be that it's not capped, it's assumed. So we may be looking at more than that. And that was one, one issue. And, and another comment was that 4% was a system-wide, not a DWSD increase, so that could be way more than that.
That would be determined on revenue requirements versus revenues received. That's why there's a variable there.
You guys feel free to ask questions as we go along. There is that $50 million payment from the authority to DWSD for Detroit. They're saying, based on the letter, or the memo of understanding, that 50 million will be used only for DWSD's system improvement. Now, if I understood correctly, this morning, the, the county is already paying 27 million every year for DWSD to fix the problems. Now we're adding another 23 million to, just to improve that system, what's going on over there? They've talked about the employee, currently, there are 1,400 employees by DWSD. There's a proposal that the authority take, take about 900, and 500 will remain at DWSD for their operation. And there were questions about, you know, if you need 500, why are you employing 1,400? Or three, four years ago, there were 5,000 people employed by, by the system. The authority body is a sixth member. Detroit has two members. McComb, Oakland, Marine has one, and the governor appoints one additional member that is not resident in either county. There is...
To clarify that, Mr. Med, either we appoint our representative, or the governor report, appoints our representative too for the county. If we do.
Yeah, by Thursday, I was trying to get to that later. By Thursday, the Board of Commissioners will vote on this, and there's an issue of who appoints that representative. The Department of Public Works is saying that they have the authority, and the Exec Office is saying that they have the authority. So, we don't know who's gonna appoint McComb County a representative, at this point. That's still unresolved. And the other thing is, it's a six-member, it's a majority vote, but since Detroit has two voting members, basically, they have the votes. And on major issues, it's a supermajority, so it's five out of six have to agree to certain issues. And again, Detroit...
They're concerned that, because of the appointments, it's already waiting before the topics even come up. Still a monopoly situation, pretty much.
Yep. So, the county exec office is, it was all for, but they look at it from a different angle. It's, if we don't go in right now, then the governor will appoint somebody that we have no relationship with. The DPW, Public Works Commissioner, is saying, we shouldn't be agreeing to this at this point, because it's not fair at this point. And I believe there are similar resolutions from Clint Township, and letters I'll send to the board, so you guys can read it, that they recommend not to vote for, for this authority. Now, just heading back, Wayne County passed, they agreed to this authority. McComb County, they should vote on Thursday, may or may not, and then Oakland is next week. The current contracts between the customers and DWSD will be honored. I believe we have a 30-year contract with DWSD, that will be honored, I think it'll be already 10 years right now. So, that will continue the same way. They will honor the same period, and we will stay under contract with them. They talked about... McComb County talked about another option to disconnect completely, and have our own water and sewer treatment plants. And just roughly, the estimates right now is $2 million for each, to come up with something that can service McComb County. So, the cost does not make sense right now.
Yeah, but still, that's not a variable compared to what, we still don't know the variables we're gonna be faced with.
Yeah, we don't. At this point, basically, they're trying to come up with an agreement, so they can go through the details. But there are a lot of ones, they can't even answer any questions, as far as rates, who's gonna be on the board, what's the bylaws, I mean, they have some draft documents, but nothing, nothing concrete yet. They have 200 days, if all counties vote yes to go forward, they have 200 days to form the authority and be in operations.
After the 200-day period, if that does not happen, then it's automatically dissolved.
Correct.
But there are, like Smid said, there's variables in every direction, whether it be administration, operation, and financials. I think one of the very hard things, sitting there looking at and listening to the commissioners, is because of these variables and the fast track of the nature, everybody's very apprehensive on making a decision at this time. And it's very unfortunate that there isn't more information, and the information isn't clear.
Unfortunately, that's probably on purpose.
Very well, could be. You know, I can understand some of the aspects on why the ambiguous of the nature, because of negotiating in dollars, but it doesn't help in the process.
Do we know, I don't know if you can answer us on that, if the other two counties said yes, and we said no, McComb County said no, what happened to McComb County's water?
This water authority is gonna move forward regardless, because Wayne County already agreed to it. It only took one to agree to it.
Governor appointed a representative on behalf.
So, like Smid said, at this point, we either agree to it, and appoint our own representatives, whoever gets that choice, or the governor's gonna appoint one for us.
So, it is, okay, now I understand it.
One of the biggest concerns, this water authority will exist indefinitely. Basically, it's a 40-year body, but there's a clause as, as long as there are bonds open, signing bonds, the authority will exist. And the authority will have projects every year, and the bonds will go for 20, 30 years. So, that's, it looks like it's a forever thing.
The thing is, we really don't have any say or to change it, you know, except whoever the McComb County appoints to be our spokesperson.
Yeah, at this point, it doesn't look like we have a whole lot of leverage to make this thing go in any specific direction.
Do you have any other questions?
I have a question, it just sounds like Detroit just wants to form another committee and get more money. Because it's not gonna give us any further control or choice in the matter.
That's very true, most of the comments are like that, it's only benefiting one entity, and it's unbalanced, that's why they're opposing to that structure, but...
There is, I mean, one thing that was interesting to listen to, the meeting we went to in Detroit a few weeks ago, there was a lot of representatives from a very large company called Viola. They're a private company that manages water assets. So, they do a lot of cities like Philadelphia, they have some stuff in New York. They came in with 50 people, and went through the ins and outs of the entire Detroit system. They know what it's gonna take to turn this department around, and they've made their recommendations, and what it's gonna take to do that, you know, personnel-wise and cost-wise. I wouldn't be surprised if you see them be part of the authority as well, to operate everything outside of the city limits.
Okay.
So, the vote is scheduled for October 9th, but it's Thursday at 9:00 a.m. And the police board is welcome to attending. The board is welcome to attend. It'll be at the county building, non-criminal.
When is it?
October 9th.
October 9th at 9:00 a.m. I will scan all these documents, I will send it to everybody, we just got it, about 2 o'clock today. And I should be able to scan emails to every one of you by tomorrow.
Is it the Clint Township resolution? Is that the way you're talking about? I got that in an email already.
Yeah, that's part of, part of it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Saif. Saw grant update.
Saw grant update. Well, again, congratulations, the township had received $150,000 in grant money with a 10% match that may be deleted. So, the township, there's a potential for the township to get $150,000 exact. We applied for that back in November last year. And the state has agreed to award Lennox Township with $150,000 for an asset management, wastewater asset management plan. The SAW basically is a sewer, sanitary, storm, and wastewater asset management. At that time, when we applied, we didn't have any shallbrody projects, but we applied for a portion of the grant, which is called an asset management plan, and we did get awarded with that $150, 50 grand. I believe the Michigan Financial Authority is gonna communicate with Lennox and commit to that money in October. I just asked Jeanette, she hasn't received that letter yet. So, the state approved the application, now we need the financial authority to commit with the dollar amount. And that's just a technicality, it should be coming in this month anytime. Cam and I went through all the items on the asset management plan. Basically, this will help us map the sewers, TV, videotape, and clean the 26-mile arm, because it's more than 20 years old, the oldest part of the system. We will get some software, we will get some station to develop GIS, that Cam and somebody here at the township will benefit from. There is a section that covers training for three people on the GIS, and also the pipe inspection. And there's a portion for developing a rate structure, or revisit our rate structure to make sure that our debt, you know, what we're charging is working on our debt. I believe we're gonna involve the attorney, your financial guy, and our office. In talking to Cam, you know, cleaning videotape in the sewers right now, it don't make sense, because the ground's gonna be frozen very soon. So, we're gonna wait for the spring to do that.
When the ground's the wettest, then the infiltration will show up less. So, if the train could be in groundwater coming into the pipe that we don't want to see.
If I release, it would happen. But in waiting till the spring, we could start with mapping and get the GIS rolling. The board has already approved all these costs, and you have a comp. I guess, this is more like an FII, and we should wait until we get the financial authority to commit with these monies. And then, it's just a simple go-ahead, and we'll put the specs together and go out for bits.
Since it would be spring of 2015, that's okay, it's not, it has to be done used before the end of this year?
Correct, we have three years to spend this money. And again, the financial authority will give us some guidelines of how we do this. It's basically, we invoice, and the contractor invoicing Lennox, Lenx pays, and then send the expenditure back to the state for reimbursement. That could be 100% or minus the 10%, perhaps, mentioned. That's a great thing, we haven't got, Cam told me, we haven't got a grant for a water and sewer, ever, to do anything. It's our first one.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Food pantry award ceremony request. I received a call-off from Mrs. Gower. She is requesting an award ceremony for all the people that contribute and support the food pantry. She would like to do it at the Township Hall in our meeting room here, and provide a dinner. What she's basically saying is, if we could piggyback it off one of our meetings, to where we have our meeting, and then have the ceremony with a meal, that would be fantastic. If not, she has to go rent a hall and take care of this. And I think, Jeanette, in speaking with you, wasn't it, at Tops, she thought about 75 people? So, in a maximum capacity, or maximum amount of people, she thought there would be about 75. The only thought in speaking with Jeanette and Mrs. Gower is that we don't push it too late in the evening. She'd like to do it at the December meeting, if we could do it. Maybe, once again, it's something that we do our meeting at 4 o'clock again, for two hours, at 6 o'clock, award ceremony, dinner. We do have enough tables in this room to accommodate. Probably gonna be at least about an hour, hour-long, I would say, for her to pass out the awards and to eat dinner, at least at a minimum, I would say.
Would they be willing to do the dinner first, and then have us have our meeting at the normal time?
I think she's all...
And then the awards afterwards, at our meeting?
To eat first, and then have a meeting?
And then have our regular meeting at our regular time? We've already had, we've already set up two 4 o'clock meetings, I need to do three.
And I understand that, the only thing is, in December, once again, where it's low light conditions, I can get started early. I don't know how many people it would affect, doing it at the 4, if we did it earlier, but if you wanna do it at 7:30, that's fine also.
Oh, if we had our meeting at 7:30?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that.
Their meeting normal, but if they...
I mean, we've already done that two months ago.
If they had the dinner at 5:30, if they had the dinner at 5:30, that would give two hours before a meeting started.
I don't know if that would give them time for the people to get here for her, but I can ask her. I think a lot of people will work till 5 or so, then have to commute, so...
Yeah, Karen just had to do it.
Well, then they would be able to be in a 4 o'clock meeting to get the award.
Yeah, we're already doing the 4 o'clock meeting in November, can they do it then?
No!
I forgot why we moved it, sorry, Joey.
Give me your recommendation again for the summer, if you would.
What I said was, if they had their dinner at 5:30, we have our meeting at the normal time of 7:30, and we present the awards during the meeting.
I think, the only thing I think is, 5:30 would be too early for them to eat, because of the work schedule for a lot of the people, these are companies, so they probably get done around 5:00. I don't know if that would give them enough time to get here to eat.
I don't think we need two hours for the people to eat.
No, I, an hour.
Barely enough.
So, I would just present it to them that they could do the dinner anywhere from 5:30 to 6:30, but they would have to have it cleaned up enough that we can have our board meeting at 7:30?
I mean, I prefer telling them to eat afterwards, if that's the case of our meeting. I mean, I think that's gonna cause a problem, too early for them. But we could discuss with them.
I'm thinking 6:30.
If they can't come, if they can't come and eat at 6:30, then they can't come at 4 o'clock to be at the meeting to get the awards presented to them in the first place.
No, it wouldn't be a 4 o'clock presentation, it would be an after the meeting.
I thought they wanted to do it as a part of our meeting?
After the meeting.
Well, they could pick any day, they wouldn't have to pick our meeting day, they could pick any day of the week they want.
They would like to do it on a separate day? That's fine. The other part that concerns me is bringing 75 people in here, and a bunch of food, and we're about to get the carpets cleaned. And if we do that just before, and now we got all these people in here eating, we've talked about not letting people use the hall for stuff like this. This is basically what we've said we're not gonna do.
We have let other ones use it, and there's some here that have done that. I don't particularly have a problem with them using the building for this, and we're gonna be using this building, or, I mean, this room ourselves, for potlucks and stuff in the Christmas season, so if it's a matter of, let's not clean the carpets until after, you know, in January.
I think this is a great event, I mean, this really, it just recognizes the people that feed the people of our community. Do we know why the New Haven pantry is, do we want to do it here and not at their hall? I was curious about that, too. Well, it's, Monix New Haven Ray Pantry, they asked us, that's what I know. She put in a call to us and asked us if we would host it. I would hate to decline for everything that they do for the community. I think it's, the amount of work that they put into the food pantry, the hours of volunteer, hours that they put in, it's unbelievable. The job they do is incredible. Well, I have a problem, I was just curious why they're not doing it in New Haven.
Yeah, I just think it's... I'm not saying turn them down, I'm just saying, not move our meeting time.
If you'd like to do it on a different day, I can, you know, hit them with all of that.
Either a different day, you're saying that they don't want to do the award ceremony during our meeting, so it doesn't need to be on that day?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if we started at 7:30 and had our meeting a part of that, we wouldn't have that meeting probably till 9:00, 9:30, and I think that's too late.
Well, if we did the meeting at 4 o'clock, they would be eating at 6 o'clock anyways, when our meeting is done. So, if we just have them come in and do their eating at 6 o'clock, and have our meeting after, it's the same thing, we're just not changing our meeting time. Am I reading that correctly?
If that's what you like to recommend, a 6 o'clock eat, and that awards presentation part of our meeting, I can definitely tell her. I don't think the tables want to interfere with our meeting, we can style these chairs out here, tables can be backed.
Do they want, do the awards ceremony to be part of our meeting or not part of our meeting?
Doesn't matter. I think it would be a nice, nice gesture to be part of our meeting where it's televised. I think that would be great. Steve, do you have anything on that?
No.
Okay. If you, like I said, she's just, I think she's gonna be very flexible. You know, the biggest concern I see is the time, is that if it's 6:00, that we, I know she's got people that work till 5:00, that we allow them time to get here to eat and-
Well, either way, I mean, that's, we can do that. If they're still, if they eat at 6:00, we can have the meeting after they eat, at our normal time.
That would be fine. I can propose that to her, if that's what the public board recommends.
So I'll make a motion that we allow them to have their dinner here before the meeting, but we have our meeting at the same time, 7:30. And really, they can pick the time that they want to eat. That really doesn't matter to us. They can whatever time they want, just as long as they're done with their dinner before our 7:30 meeting.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
I think we, they could, they could tell their guests that, you know, arrive between 6:00 and 6:30, you know, serve dinner at 6:30. That'll give that, you know, that amount of people plenty of time to eat, and then you start eating.
Yeah, we just, I just don't wanna throw people out if they're still eating, and it's part of our ceremony. I mean, would the board mind if they're still eating and they're being quiet?
It's pretty normal. I mean, you know.
All right.
Yeah, I agree. We should take it out.
Make the awards part of the, part of the meeting while they're doing it.
At the beginning, so they don't have to hang around.
Fine, fine, no, I mean, any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye, opposed. I'll give her the details and see if that flies, and I'll call the board. So that will be 6:00 to 6:30 start, approximately?
Or whenever they want, so that, just so they're done. If they can figure it out so they're done, I'm opposed to done by December meeting.
All right, on the December meeting. Thank you.
If that doesn't, if that doesn't work for her, just on hindsight, I'm November meeting, all elections, all right. I was gonna say it again.
All right.
I forgot.
Waste management demolition material fee request. Good evening, Chuck.
Evening. Chuck Cassidy, Pine Tree Acres. As most of you all know, we presented to the board a, an opportunity back in, I believe it was June, to amend the host agreement fees for demolition material for a specific project over a specific period of time, from 50 cents per cubic yard to 50 cents per ton. We shortened thereafter, withdrew that, after hearing the comments from the board and from the audience. We went back, we took another look at it, we talked to some of our demo contractors. We recognize that we kind of rushed into that last one because of the meeting schedule. It really wasn't intentional, but we tried to get it on the, you weren't having a July meeting, so we tried to rush it through. So we went back, we took our time, we looked at it a little bit. We talked about it in a couple of our community information meetings that we have for the landfill every eight months or so. Came with a new proposal that you had in front of you tonight. It was essentially the same proposal, but we put a cap on the volume. It seemed that the real objection to our prior proposal was there was no limit, and that made sense to us. We kind of left it wide open, and we had no idea how much of this material we might be able to attract. So the proposal you have today limits the, the volume to 300,000 tons a year, which sounds like a big number. But for the tonnage that, that we typically do in a year, it's a, it's a fairly small amount. The, the concern there seemed to be mostly around the airspace available at the landfill and how many, how much time this would take off the end life of the landfill. I can tell you, Pine Tree Acres has somewhere in the neighborhood of 24, 25 years of capacity, about 38.5 million tons of, of capacity. So this program, you know, over three years, and that's what we've limited it to, three years with an opportunity at, at the board's pleasure to extend it two more years. But in three years, about 900,000 yards is, you know, a pretty insignificant amount over the life of this landfill. I'll also tell you that since 2006, our landfill volumes, due to recycling and, and competition, have reduced about 650,000 tons a year. So that, that 300,000 tons a year that we're proposing on this really only makes up about half of the shortfall that we're already seeing in tonnage. So, you know, when I say 24, 25 years of, of life at Pine Tree, that's at current volume. The trend seems to be going down. So that, that possibly extends that even beyond that, that mark. Right now, at current volume, that, that, that three-year deal, 900,000 tons, would represent something less than six months of a life low income. One of the other issues that we heard was truck traffic. I went back and took a look at that. We're currently seeing about 300 to 350 trucks per day, based on this 300,000, if we indeed could attract 300,000 tons a year with this proposal. I think it's possible we, we could see that kind of volume. That's 1,100 tons per day. With an average truck density of around 30 tons, you know, we're talking about three or four trucks an hour, maybe 30 trucks a day. So not a significant amount of truck traffic increase either. And again, it doesn't put us back to where we were five or six or seven years ago, where our volumes were really trending high. With that lower volume, we've also, and you've also seen a decrease in fees coming to the township. So the economic side of this thing, we think if we can attract 300,000 tons a year of this special project, we're talking about 15, $150,000 a year, $450,000 over the three-year deal to the township. We don't believe we can attract any or at least much of that volume without some sort of compensation here on this, on this fee. The demo materials, particularly residential demo material, it's pretty light material. And because it's light and because the current fee is by the yard, you know, the, the demo contractors feel like they're penalized to come out to Pine Tree, which it's a little bit of a stretch to get them to Pine Tree anyway. There's other landfills, competitors and our own, that are closer, that that material is currently going to. So we have some safeguards in the proposal. This material would, this, this agreement we would take to our primary demo contractors, our larger contractors that are willing to sign a contract with us, that, that would go through our waste approval process. And that process is to prevent, you know, unacceptable waste from coming to the landfill. We call it our special waste approval process, and we would only offer this discounted rate to those customers that will come on that. And we'll actually track this by, by manifest. Each load will come from the contractor to us with a waste approval, a shipment record, and a, and a manifest that we can track who gets the discounted rate and who doesn't. We will also, in this agreement, you have the rights to audit, you know, the process anytime you want, and we'll report at whatever frequency the board wants. I think the agreement calls for it, is it quarterly? But monthly wouldn't be a problem, and we can do it at any frequency you guys want to see it at. I think it's an opportunity to bring some more volume in. It's, it's relatively easy volume to handle. It's not odorless waste. It's dry.
Doesn't smell?
Doesn't smell. Yeah. The, the issue is, is just that it's light, and that's a problem for the contractors.
Attorney Joppick, you reviewed this?
Yes, I've reviewed. I reviewed the prior agreement, provided a number of comments back, back in June, when this was before the township board. And the comments I laid out appear to have been addressed in the draft that was most recently sent, plus it includes the cap, and that was not in the prior agreement. So there were a number of changes, many of them grammatical, many of them substantive, and then, that I was looking for in the draft agreement, just from a pure legal standpoint, policy forces up to the board, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. But from a contractual standpoint, the changes I was looking for have been put into the agreement, and they've added the tonnage cap that was mentioned here this evening. And it is not 300,000 per year. It's an average of 300,000 over the course of the three years. So each year may be a little different, for maybe above and below, assuming they even reach the cap, of course. It does provide for a renewal option as well, and that, that is in the agreement, not mentioned here, but it is, it was part of the original draft that was submitted, and it continues in this draft. About the only thing, the only issue that I had that is more of a technical type of an issue, there's a, an agreement out there that appears to be an amendment subsequent to the first amendment. This is labeled the second amendment to the host agreement, and there appears to be another agreement out there that's unsigned in our files at the township, and I inquired whether there was any evidence of that. So that would, we would, we should clean that up. If the board approves this, we would wanna clean that up, whether this is a second amendment or a third amendment to the contract. Very technical issue, but something that we would wanna take care of-
Sure.
-before this is finalized. That would not be anything if the board wants to proceed with this. They should hold it up. Something that we would take care of at the execution stage if, if approved.
Thank you.
So Chuck, at this point, there isn't any of this demo coming to Pine Tree?
There may be some. We can't necessarily identify where it comes from because we don't have under an agreement. There's, there's, we get, occasionally get demo. In fact, I took a look at the state of Michigan's website, and it looks like Pine Tree gets only about 1% of the demo disposed of in the state of Michigan in 2013. Part of that is because of this light material issue. Some demo will make its way out here, I'm sure. What we're looking for is a couple of select large contractors that'll sign a deal with us that will follow our approval process. You know, I, I didn't mention, and we talked about it the first time we brought this up, but, you know, in that approval process and in our agreement, it doesn't allow us to take anything we can't take already today. This doesn't allow us to take any hazardous waste or anything like that, and it doesn't extend the hours or operating agreement hours. So it doesn't change really anything we do, except that we can use this as a tool to attract these large volume customers that are bidding on this Detroit work. And obviously, they want, you know, to have a disposal, if they're gonna enter into an agreement, they want to have a disposal site tied up for a few years, you know, because this is a five-year project in Detroit. Again, we won't be working directly with the city of Detroit. We're working with contractors that are contracting with the city of Detroit.
I was actually gonna suggest that if we, if we were gonna do something like this to try it for one year and just see, is it really only 30 trucks, or is it 150 more trucks?
Well, we-
Because they're not gonna do it, let's say they're not gonna do it in the wintertime, so this is gonna be a summertime, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it is, it isn't, though. This will go year-round, and we, we talked to the demo contractors that we're talking with, you know, that are looking for, you know, contractors, and they gave us an average of about 30 tons per truck. So if you do the math, 1,100 tons a day, that's 30, 35 trucks.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be that much. It could be more, it could be less.
Well, that's, that's the average, certainly. That's certainly the average, yeah.
No, if, if we sign this contract, companies that don't have a contract can still bring stuff, but they're paying the regular rate.
Of course. We will only extend this deal to the ones that are following our approval process and are manifesting it from this particular gap.
So are you gonna differentiate when they, when they come in, that, you know, company ABC is, gets a preferred rate, and so we're only gonna pay the township this amount, but company XYZ, they didn't sign this contract with us, so this shipment that's coming in-
They'll pay, they'll pay the normal 50 cents per ton, or not, 50 cents per yard, yes. They'll have what our current obligation is. A couple of these contractors that come in, and each load will come with, you know, certified paperwork or the manifest, and those will be the ones that'll get this, you know, this different rate at 50 cents per ton.
Okay, so if you only have three companies that you've, that you've set okay to, it's only those that are gonna be less?
Yes. It'll have to come from this gap. And it won't be extended to anybody that just drives up with a load of, of demolition. They'll still pay the current rate.
Chuck and I sat down for quite a while last Thursday, had a big conversation about this. And Joe, do you send a one-year thing, possibly started with that? We talked about that. If the contractors make sense, they're gonna want something longer so they can plan. So that's why, because I mentioned the same thing, you would go with one year.
Yeah, it, it'll be a little tough for them, you know, because they wanna secure their, their work for more than a year.
And the other thing that we talked about that, and you could touch on it a little bit if you want, was how you regulate. And I thought it was interesting just to know how you regulate that possible potential hazardous stuff, and what happens to you if the stuff does get in here. The DEQ, and, you know, if you wanna touch a little bit on that so the audience feels a little better about it.
Sure. Anybody that's been for a tour at Pine Tree has probably heard our spiel on hazardous waste identification and response. And we, we put our scale house and our equipment operators through training every year to identify anything that doesn't look appropriate in the landfill. And what we do with that, what our response is when we find something that is not in accordance with what the manifest says it should be. The, this project is primarily residential demolition, so it's not a huge concern, but we will still watch it closely because you don't know what's in a, in a residential home. The good thing is that this is, this is, homes are demolished, so somebody is taking them apart, a demo contractor's taking these houses apart and loading them, and then they're certifying that they didn't find any hazardous material or prohibited material in that house. And that's what, part of that waste shipment record that will come with that load, and it'll say where it came from and what's in it, and it'd be their certification of that. And then, you know, what we talked about, Chris and I talked about, is that after that process, how we take that information and watch when the loads are, are done. And you can't see everything. You know, any household, normal collection can come with, you know, a bottle of bleach or something that is technically prohibited, but those things come in the landfills on every day. But hazardous waste, a drum, large tires, things like that, we will be able to pick up. And our response to that is, normally, if we can, if our operator spots something that's prohibited from the landfill, it will go right back in the truck before they leave. If the truck goes out, then we report that, and we'll have to have them come back and get it.
And you said the, the DEQ actually comes in and does random tests, and if they find something, you have to clean it up and answer.
They do. We get a lot of DEQ. We're highly regulated business. We get a lot of DEQ inspections, and part of that is our prohibitive waste program, where they will, the, the DEQ will actually go out and look through loads to see if there's something we didn't see. And they'll kind of raid our, our identification process. And then our process has to be approved as part of our license, so. So if something did come in the landfill, it's the last thing we want. You know, our license is on the line. So anyway, we have a pretty extensive process, as, as much as you can with this kind of volume in a landfill.
Just one second, Attorney John. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Since this is residential, and a lot of these homes are, what, 100 years old, lead paint, lead-based, who uses it, can it be considered hazardous?
Lead-based paint is hazardous in, in this case. If we can take that type of waste as we can, asbestos, if we handle it properly, and we were gonna handle all of this as if it were filled with asbestos.
So every load that comes in is gonna be assumed?
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. It's the only way you can do it.
Attorney John?
Yes, I have a question if I could about the, the manifest. And you mentioned the auditing portion of this. Just so the board is aware, the way the contract is set up is that quarterly, as you mentioned, a report will be provided to the township, or more frequently if we ask for it.
Right.
But quarterly at a minimum, it'll be provided to the township, and it'll provide the sources, the volume, and so forth, of the waste that is coming in under this 50 cent per ton calculation. cent per ton calculation and under this contract. You know, I think that that is probably one of the more critical reports that's going to document and support what is coming in under this for the township, and it might be beneficial if possible. Would it be too much trouble as part of that report to include the copies of the manifest during the report period, and the companies that are approved to bring it in?
I'm sure we can do that.
So if we, it might be helpful so that we have all the documentation without having to get into an audit. That would obviously be part of the audit, but the township would have to pay for that audit, and you'd only do an audit if there was some discrepancy. So getting this information upfront would probably help, be helpful with transparency and being clear to avoid audits, so I think it would be beneficial.
We have previous data of tonnage that we'll be able to compare to, and the cost and the revenue coming in, which we'll be able to keep it legit.
Yeah, we can supply a copy of the declaration. It may be a copy machine copy as a part, as opposed to one of the, you know, three or four-part manifests that all have somewhere to go to the state of Michigan, you know, because this is all recorded that way also, but yes, absolutely.
You probably have duplicate copies, and instead of one of those, because there won't be enough, you'll have to use your own.
We can do that, yeah.
That'll also give us a count of trucks, right?
Well, that's, and that's exactly how we're going to keep track of them, is each load, each manifest will be a load.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So, to make it, you know, look like we're really doing our job, what's the chances you hope to 55 cents a cubic? We're negotiating, right?
I don't know. It's something we'd have to talk about.
I think we should.
We're posing something, we're not here to negotiate, but, you know.
Okay, because you said before, a cubic yard, what was the, between the two?
Well, you know, you don't, you don't know going into this, if we use the average that the contractor gave us, it was about three to one, three yards to a ton. Some of this waste, you know, when the foundations come in, it'll be one to one, so some of it will be, it won't matter, you know, the closer, the closer they get to one to one, the less this really means.
Correct.
But the particularly light loads, you know, the only other thing a contractor could do would be to pre-grind or pre-crush to try to get the density in these trucks. And I'll tell you that all of our interests are kind of aligned on this type of deal because the trucker wants as much density as he can get in the truck too, because he wants to haul this as few loads as he can, so. So it'll be all over the board, we won't know until we do it in a little while, but probably in that three to one for an overall average, something like that.
Well, we talked before that, you know, if it's going to come in, it's going to come in anyway, but now you're saying, no, they'll send it someplace else?
Oh, it's already going to other places. You know, we're, we've done the same thing we're asking you to do, you know, reduced our rate to as low as we can get it to try to get that material to come here. We know it's going to other landfills, it's, the project is already moving, we're not seeing much of it here, but, you know, we put our price out there plus fees, and the fees are just prohibited. So it's hard to say how much Jody will get, I mean, I guess you run some risk of taking some material at a lesser rate than it would have come anyway, but, you know, like any other program, what we're doing is trading a little bit of dollars for volume that we wouldn't normally get, so in the end, I think you make more money. That's what we're going on.
Are we the farthest away from, are we the-
What's that?
Farthest landfill away from all of this?
Are we?
Yeah.
Probably the farthest away from any that will get it.
Okay.
Maybe, you know, maybe some of it might get to Flint, which might be a toss-up for coming here, you know, there's a couple, three landfills in Flint.
What does the board think about negotiating the cost per cubic yard?
What did you say, 55 cents? Is that what you said?
I mean, something.
That's okay, I was thinking 75, because then it would be like, we'll split it with you. Split the difference.
You would have to take that back to get it?
Yep. I don't, you know, I don't know if that'll work or not, that would be, have to be something I'd take back. The 50 cents a yard versus 50 cents a ton is pretty clean and pretty easy, you know, to watch. If we want to negotiate something else, I guess we could talk about that.
Well, what are most, what are most other host fees? Now, you said that they're, you know-
They're all over the place. We have some that are a percent of revenue, we have many that are on a per-ton basis. I mean, per ton is the most measurable, and then there are some by the yard, you know. So there are a number of different host fees out there, they're all over the board. Some are different rates for different types of material too, which makes it even more complicated.
Steve, with something like this, I mean, do you see any reason to hold a public meeting? I mean, we're just negotiating a contract.
Well, you're not required to, if you're asking about a public hearing, public notice and everything, you're not required to, it would be an option for the board to consider, but it's not required as a matter of law. You are making a decision, even without a public hearing, you are open to public comment, you have a posted agenda, and it's under the open meetings act, it's all open, so it is, does meet all legal requirements.
Excuse me, Jody, the machine back there was clicking, does that mean the tape's running now, or, there was some noise coming from there, I'm sorry?
Just coming.
I don't know, the tape turned, or, there was making noise back there, I don't want to- Thanks, girl.
So Jody, you're thinking, ask for 75 cents, see what they come back with?
Well, I'm thinking, look and find out, and I know you don't want to say it publicly, and that's, you know, that's fine, what your, what host agreement is in other places, but I would hope that, understanding that you want to, you want to be able to be competitive, but on the same token, I don't think we should take the big brunt of this, and, you know, we're losing a dollar.
Wait, you're not losing a dollar if you don't get it. You're not losing anything if you don't get the volume.
Understood, but like you said, it's going to come in anyway, technically, it could.
It can.
I like the idea that, like you said, with the manifest and stuff, we know what's on there.
I think that was mistoken, misspoken, that these types of material can come in, but that specific material, a small percentage, you said, only is making it now, correct?
But likely, we will see very little of this material at the current rates, yes. We can legally accept that type of waste, but our bet is we won't see any.
And I understand that.
If we can't adjust the rate, if we can't adjust our rate, anyone's.
And I understand that.
Part of the calculation that the contractor will make is, what's it cost me to tip at the landfill, and what's it cost me to get to the landfill and back, and how many trips a day can a truck make, you know, four trips versus five? So they'll, they'll look at all that, and they might pay a higher rate at one of the other landfills, because they're closer, you know.
Right, because then they're not spending it on gas, because they're getting their-
Yeah, they have prices.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just looking at, if you say it's really a dollar, three to one, a dollar fifty a ton, and now we're going to go down to 50 cents a ton, but yet, there's another landfill that's paying a dollar a ton, and they're competitive on their price.
Right.
That's all.
Understood.
So, well, and I suppose I, are you guys taking the same punt that we are?
Well, I'm not going to discuss our price.
That's what I was going to say.
But let me, let me say this, Chris, we have lowered our price as much as we can, and that's kind of why we're here. We've dropped our price, you know, for a large volume discount in order to secure some of this work, lower at this site than we have at other sites.
So is your theory that if you go much more than the 50 cents a cubic yard, that's going to push people?
You know, I don't know where the number is, I, you know, I'm not in the talks with the contractors. There's been a lot of meetings trying to get them to come, you know, and I'm not in those talks, so where's the tipping point, I'm not sure.
Chris, were you at the meeting when they were talking about it with the citizens?
Yeah.
So you, what was their thoughts?
Well, Vicki's the one that was in here.
I know, that's my point, yeah.
Well, I don't know, my feeling is basically, just like you said, we know some of it is coming in now anyways. Right, Chuck?
Some, yes.
Some, because I saw it inside of the hill. I really, I understand their position, we were all at the meeting the other day, I understand their position on trying to negotiate something with the township, and I think it's a matter of, let's be reasonable about this, it's going to come in, one way or the other, so if we can come with some kind of middle in the ground, that's my feeling, and would I rather see that than the other contract? Yes.
Well, it's, in that theory, kind of, you know, it's going to come in anyways, but if we leave it alone, it comes in at a higher rate for us, but like Chuck said, there'll be a lot less of it, so ultimately, at the 50 cents, we are going to see a lot more revenue come to the township.
I think it's pretty low risk to the township, you know.
And you said, if I remember right, you're guesstimating that it'll take, in the 25 years, it'll use up about six months' worth of space.
Well, that's, that's what kind of the math says, my estimate is you won't be able to calculate what it uses up, because we're fairly low in the, you know, in the landfill right now, so when you stack all that waste on top of it, you know, the-
And you were talking about the-
Crushing effect of that waste, I think it would be probably difficult to calculate in time, you know, what it includes in this landfill, but worst case, it would be that it's up to about six months' worth of airspace, so 24 and a half years airspace as opposed to 25, maybe. Again, our volume is on the decrease, you guys have seen it, I think our host payments are down a billion dollars a year, less than they were.
Yeah, we were, we have realized about a million dollars less in revenue a year.
Yeah, and 600, 700, 650,000 tons a year less, so is it, you know, the landfill likely life will extend well beyond what we're calculating today, the 25 years, just from a reduced volume because of recycling and competition.
I, I think we can stay with the 50 cents per ton. It's a, it's a three-year contract. I mean, if we find after three years that it is increasing more than we anticipated, we could raise, we can negotiate a raise in the fees then, or change the contract at some point, because right now, it's, they have to go out and get these customers to come to them, and without a low incentive of cost, they're not going to get it, which means we're not going to get it. So I'm thinking, because economy-wise and drop in volume that we have been seeing, try the 50 cents for now, and three years flies by a lot quicker, you know, pretty quick, so.
Well, I'm happy with the cap that they put in there. Right, and I'm happy with manifests, so we know exactly what is coming in as opposed to somebody that is coming out here because they couldn't take it to some of the other places, because they got a better deal, because they've got stuff on there that might not make it in one of the other places, so.
I think pretty much, I mean, you know, hazardous waste won't be allowed in any of the other places, so the material probably will be put in uniform throughout the other sites, I think it's going to be a practice deal, it's going to be, they're going to take it where they get the best things, that's what I think.
So the bottom line is, really, the stuff's going to come anyways, we can't stop it, we're just trying to up our potential for more revenue, and the material can and will be here anyways, we're not changing anything about what comes in or out of the landfill, we're just potentially trying to get more.
That's absolutely true, this is really just a financial deal to attract volume that won't come here otherwise. We have the potential of, you know, another 150,000 dollars a year in the town.
That being said, I will make a motion to go ahead and approve the amendment to the Pine Tree Acres landfill, changing the amount to 50 cents per ton, am I right?
Yes.
Coming in strictly from contracts through the city of Detroit demolition, that's on the agenda.
Also, I'd like to add that it'd be researched to make sure whether a second amendment is like down.
Yes, just to be clear, we're talking about the second amendment to agreement that's been presented to the, to the board this evening for consideration, that's what the board would be approving. I'm going to copy that, it might be a third amendment, and we'll check that, and also including the provision regarding providing manifests in the names of that approved.
Why don't we do this, I'll withdraw my motion, you tell me what I'm going to say. Because, I mean, this is a contract thing, so if you don't mind doing that, then I'll sum up your amendment.
Okay, well, what I propose that the board consider would be a motion to approve the second amendment, second amendment to agreement between Lennox Township and Pine Tree Acres, amending the agreement previously dated January 3, 1989, as it was amended thereafter, with the conditions that it include a provision in paragraph four, providing for the quarterly reports to include the supporting manifest and approved transporting companies, and also that it be verified to be a second amendment and not a third, and adjusted if necessary. So moved.
To the board.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Turgeon. Any other discussion or comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Probably some of the people. We have to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oil and gas drilling and production operation resolution. Attorney Joppick, I can, I do have, I've informed the board too, I do have a prior amendment I have to go to, I don't know if there's any way to expedite some of this, I know a couple of these issues are, are really not much content. Attorney Joppick, you went over this resolution?
Yes, I did, I'm sorry, yes, I'm speaking on the agenda, yes, I did, I worked on the amendment, or the resolution, provided correspondence to the board to explain what this was about and what the resolution relates to, and it is based roughly upon resolutions that have been passed by some other communities, but it's customized for Lennox Township, different ordinances here, different character of community installments, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Karen, looking through this, is the planning commission and Dave Burchler ready to kind of tackle this? Because if Steve put in here, you can't just put a moratorium on, put a moratorium on it, it has to be because you're moving forward to establish something, so, to establish ordinances that would prohibit what we don't want, such as too close to homes or, right?
Yes, well, if I may, Mr. Subryan.
Yes, sir.
That's exactly right, it would be whether or not we can adopt ordinances, because there are certain preemption provisions in the zoning statutes, so to what extent can we regulate, studying that, and to the extent that the township can regulate in this area of oil and gas drilling and production, developing ordinances that fall within the confines, those would come with the planning commission, presumably if they're under the zoning ordinance, they may not, if they're under the police powers in non-zoning, and they might not, but the planning commission may vary a little bit.
So have you spoke to Dave Burchler on this at all? I mean, and that's not going to stop us- I mean, and that's not going to stop us from, you know, either supporting this resolution or not, but just knowing that that's something that we would have to follow through with?
I hope not, and it would be something that would be the next step, I presume.
Any questions?
So, I guess we would need to know what the plan is moving forward if we pass this resolution.
As the board authorizes, the planning commission start working on it and then we can authorize Dave Burchler to work with the attorney and get ordinances written. That way, they can...between Dave and Steve, they can figure out whether it's going to be written as a board ordinance or a planning. The planning commission cannot enforce, you know, like the...
Well, that's what just, you know, reading over it, it was like, okay, we don't just pass this and say, okay, we passed it, we're done. You know, there has to be a step moving forward, so.
You could pass it and say, and you also give the authority to Attorney Joppik to contact Mr. Burchler and start the process.
Is that a motion?
Well, I missed the first part, but yes, I will make a motion to approve the oil and gas drilling and production operations resolution and authorizing the township attorney Steve Joppik to get in touch with our planner, Dave Burchler, and develop appropriate ordinances.
Support. Motion by Trustee Turchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Former township building content cleanup extending seasonal staff timeline.
I sent everyone an email on this. Carol, Wes, and Patrick went over to the old building. There's a lot of chairs, books, desks, lockers. Are the lockers gone out of there? There's still some in there? Okay, I thought they moved them over. Filing cabinets, et cetera. They're not doing any good over there. In fact, they're getting worse because of the moisture that's over there. It's just a breeding ground. I propose that we keep Patrick on for a month, and during that month, that's their job to empty that building out. The filing cabinets, I know, I need a few. I'm sure there's other offices in here that need a few. They need to be cleaned up and brought over, and that I would like to get rid of everything else, whether it is holding, where the employees all say, oh, I would like a filing cabinet, and we just scrap it per se and get it off of the list of what we own. The desks and stuff, the same thing. And as I mentioned in here, the IT tech would really like one of the desks over there. He's willing to pay for it, but who knows how much? And that building just needs to be cleaned out, emptied, so it's empty.
I was over there looking around the other day. There's a lot of very, very historical documents over there, very old, from the 1800s. What are your plans with those?
The stuff, the documents are over there. That's what I'd like to move most of them, get them back over here. The historical documents, it's very important that we get those out of there. And those would, I would...those are the ones I'm saying put in the basement. If we get some more filing cabinets over here, we've already been moving stuff around in our office so that we can fit it all, as much of it as we can in here. The stuff that is...we only have to keep it for so many years, like the financial stuff, that can stay over there because if it gets wet and damp, it doesn't matter. Because after seven years, we're going to send it for shredding anyway. But the minutes and all that kind of stuff, we'll move them over here.
I'll make a motion then to follow Jody's recommendation to extend the seasonal staff timeline for another month with the premise that the hours are used to strictly clean and empty the other building. Can we check...has Patrick been asked, is this all right with him? Does he have that available time? Cam, has he been talked to about this?
I don't know if he's in office until it's seen the agenda.
And I have not. I just presented this.
I'll just add, provided the employee can do it.
Well, the only thing I'd like to add is Cam is in charge of those employees, so, I mean, if he's willing to do it, just authorize it, let Cam supervise and get it done.
Should we say a month or up to a month? They're probably only two weeks away when they're there. We don't want Cam here for a month if he doesn't need to be here for...
Well, I'll say two. You know, what, those started with a month and I might find out it's going to take two?
Well, yeah, but it could take two weeks, too.
Yeah.
So, I would let Cam oversee it and he'll...
Okay, let me change my motion here. I'll make a motion that we extend the seasonal staff timeline for the DPW employee under the direction of Superintendent Cam Trombley to how long we need to clean out the other building. How's that? I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Turchie, supported by Treasurer Ann Barker. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 2015 MTA conference request.
I'll make a motion that we authorize any board member that would like to go to it, permission to go. Are every...is everyone aware on the board that it's January 27th through the 30th of 2015, and it's at the Hanway Grand Plaza in Red Rapids?
Yes, sir.
And you are going to be able to do reservations. We'll open on 10/21. That's this month. Everybody will be in charge of if they want to go. We've approved it, but they need to know that they need to take care of the reservations and things.
Thank you. Was there support of the motion?
I'll support it.
Who's supported it?
Jody.
Motion by Trustee Turchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Policy manual, special meeting.
I remember, if someone said October was not a good month. Policy manual, the special meeting. I'd actually like to have a workshop meeting first. With everybody having time to read this, this is a lot of reading that was just sent to us. I'd like to have the workshop meeting because it's been so long since we had the sit-down meetings. So, I don't know, I guess we're looking at November.
Okay, basically, make it around all of your schedules because I only get my schedule three weeks out. And if I can make it, I can make it. If not, then I will contact someone and sit down with them and go over if there's something I don't see as correct, so.
Or does everybody want to read through it as best we can in the month of October and come back with any questions for the November meeting and then set a meeting at that point?
That sounds good.
Well, November 4th is...or the November meeting is the election day, and this could get lengthy if we went out and addressed it.
No, I'm just saying. If...
Just set a meeting date.
Set a date at that point. And because, you know, we're looking...I'm not a hunter, but I know there's hunters on this board. So, you know, I don't want to say November and then it's like right at the 15th, so.
So, basically, you want to table, write them out until...
Till the November meeting with everyone taking the month of October to read through the material presented to us.
Now, was this emailed to us? I didn't see it.
It was emailed to us.
That's your motion, Jody?
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Turchie. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Public comments? Yes, ma'am. Let's step up the podium, please. Just give your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Taffrelly.
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry. Ma'am.
My name is Lisa Taffrelly. It's spelled T-A-F, like Frank, R-A-L-I-A-M. My address is 24701 29 Mile Road, Red Township. I'm attending this meeting today. My main thing is for the natural wetlands that are supposedly supposed to go in at Omo and 29 Mile Road. I sent a letter with concerns to the people as requested, and I never got a response. Now, my neighbor, Roberta Schmidt... Received confirmation that she had...her letter had been received. I never received a confirmation and did not know that a permit had been pulled. I have very many concerns. First of all, West Niles virus isn't as prevalent here in our Macomb County as it is in other areas, but if you make a Macomb...if you make a mosquito breeding ground, we're going to have it killing dogs, horses, and any other livestock. The dairy farms will be affected. West Niles is transmitted by mosquitoes that bite infected birds. The birds do not die. The mosquito then bites the livestock and they contract the West Niles. If they are not strong enough to fight it off, they will die, and it is not a good thing to watch. I have lost one horse to West Niles virus. I live on a well. I am worried that if you permit this wetlands to go through, my well could be affected. If they dig deep enough to hit a spring, it could dry up the wells for the few homes, although we're not many, maybe 20 around us. Nobody has done land survey or done any investigating to see where the water's going to come from to fill this. My other concern is Omo Road and 29 Mile Road, specifically 29 Mile Road, becomes a swamp or a flood plain anytime it rains. If you have a wetlands and it fills with even more water, which will then run into the road drains, which will then go to the Macomb County drain, which is on my property, and to the Coon Creek, which is a little farther west of me, already flooded out at capacity anytime it rains, this is only going to make it worse. If this water has no place to go, just like last winter, the ice is going to build up under the roads, and our roads are going to be even in worse shape than they are now. I am worried about a swampland. I am worried about the skunks and the more raccoons and the wild animals that are going to be there. Anybody who has a farm or a barn knows wildlife is part of nature, but you don't invite it inside your home. And again, I was never contacted that my letters had been received. When I talked to Roberta Schmidt, she had told me basically that the township board could do nothing about it. I don't know if you can or cannot, but I am here telling you this is not the correct thing to put in. And so, I don't waste your time, Township Supervisor. You mentioned about gas going in. I live right next door to the gas explosion on 29 Mile Road. I live next door to the facility that blew up, so when you're thinking about gas and oil drilling, you make sure every one of your residents are covered because our township did not. It blew up, it damaged oak trees, it damaged...three of the horses next door were injured with flying shrapnel, and it was all because of human error. Somebody forgot to open a valve. When they blew water gas first put that in, they told us it would be safe. There was an abundance of noise. Township Supervisor Moam said, you know, it's a big company with deep pockets. Anytime you go with any company that promotes gas and oil, they're going to have money more than your township will ever see. Charlie told me to do it on my own. I did it on my own. I contacted Vector Pipeline and Plains All-American in Texas. After four years of complaining, they sent a man out. He came out and said it was built incorrectly. He asked me to give him 90 days, and he took care of it. That had nothing to do with the explosion, but there are pictures, there's shrapnel, and although there are only three homes affected immediately around this gas explosion, your township needs to look into it before you ever permit anybody to put a gas line on somebody's property or to drill. It happens, it's dangerous, and we're very lucky nobody was killed. They were just flushing the line with air, didn't open a valve. The air hit the gas that was stuck in the line and exploded and took out probably a 60,000 square foot building. I have pieces of pipe on my property weighing over 200 pounds that were literally just opened up and made flat pieces that came down into my woods and my animals or my area. As I said, I do not want to waste your time. I am glad I came to the meeting and heard about the gas, whatever gas you're putting in, because I really hope your attorneys look into it. But my main concern is the wetlands being put in. I don't think it's a good idea. I have not heard that from the people. They never contacted me saying they received it. Mrs. Schmidt did report. She was given a phone number, but nobody ever answered it, and none of her concerns were ever addressed.
And the DEQ?
The DEQ. As far as when she called the DEQ, they never had any reports of her concerns, or mine for that matter. So, it is something to look into. Thank you very much for your time, and I do apologize for being late.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to repeat my name. Christine Bell, I'm running for the state senate in this district, and I wanted to give you my contact information. I meant to do it when I was up here before, but I got distracted talking about the fire department. If anyone would like to email me, my email is christinebelljd@sbclocal.net. My address is 34624 Joel Street. That's J-O-E-L, Chesterfield Township, 48047. My home phone number is 586-725-8550. I have business cards if I could be allowed to give them to you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Make a motion to adjourn at 6:05.
Motion by Trustee Turchie, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other question or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.